Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
...of the meeting Thursday, March 18. So moved, perfect. And we actually don't need a second for that. Are there any corrections or adjustments to the agenda? I actually have a pardon me to the minutes. I have a couple. But Margie, do you have any corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
Okay. I would offer a couple. First, team, the OLSI, we'd need to have her name spelled correctly and members in attendance. And then Andy, when you, Andy Hauss' name needs to be spelled correctly under six reports. Andy Hauss gave an update. And I'm looking at the fourth bullet to the last, Andy, and it reads Kelly O'Ryan is going to the restorative practice at the high school but will bow to our Title IX coordinator. So I'm sure that's not exactly what was intended.
No.
So she's going to be the restorative practice person at the high school? Or she's sitting in an office?
She's the restorative practice coordinator for the high school, but then she's also our Title IX Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator for the SU.
Okay. Will be our Title IX coordinator for the SU. So just that sentence will read Kelly O'Ryan is going to be the restorative practice coordinator at the high school but will also be our Title IX coordinator for the SU. Then down under the report, the next paragraph that reports on the Nature-Based Learning Institute, it refers to about the middle of the paragraph, every school wanted to be involved from pre-K to high school. Actually, it was pre-K to middle school.
Middle school.
In terms of the, I'm sure high schools wanted to be there, but in terms of who was in attendance, that's, that's what it was. Actually, farther up in Andy's report, last week, we hosted the Nature-Based Learning, it should be Institute, but that's okay with Antioch. It's the first step in a larger innovative approach to expand nature and work-based learning for our students. It says in a larger innovated to expand, it's just not quite complete. And then over, under preliminary budget planning, the policy committee, C, this is on the next page, there's a reference to, it should be, there are some statutes around that. So it's the third line, there are some, not statutes, but statutes around that, just to make that more clear. Those are all my corrections. So the team, if acceptable to you, will take your motion to approve the minutes as amended or is correcting. Yes, I'm just finishing. Yes. Okay. All those in favor? Margie?
I.
And I approve as well. Thank you. Thanks very much. So reports, we get to hear from the superintendent first.
So it seems like so long ago, but we, you know, school started on August 31st. We welcomed back our students. As I went around, it was actually, it was great to see kids smiling and talking with students, to hear them say how much they were excited to be back in school. And as I even kidded with them, they were like, no, I'm happy to be here. So it was, it was really cool to have seen that. And, and you know, I just had to throw in a big thank you to our maintenance custodial staff, our buildings, we're just, I mean, everyone walks in right before school opens and you're like, how's it gonna work? And then he talks, it's just, it's beautiful. So hats off to them. Also, our after-school programs actually began this week here at Westminster. It got kicked off and Jim Blinzick is our site coordinator and she does a great job of getting things going. She's right, keeps us on task, which is good. So I think the goal is even try and offer more programming for kids. So, you know, it's just as we get staff and students. So it's looking to grow here, so it's a really good thing. Just before school opened up, excuse me, all of our elementary school staff participated in the Responsive Classroom Two training. So, and then we expanded that this year with Responsive Classroom One for our middle school. Folks, as those kids are moving up, we wanted them to be, be speaking the same language. And just so folks are aware, that Responsive Classroom is a student-centered, social and emotional approach to teaching and learning and discipline. And it's part of our overall social emotional goals for our recovery plan. And it's a Tier One or universal approach for all students. It's what every student gets. And if they need more structure, we go to Tier Two and then Tier Three type of thing. So.
And it's a proactive approach rather than reactive.
Yes. And I, just while we're here, thank Liz because I think Liz was a big proponent of pushing it in pass and bringing it through to the SU. So she's kind of taking the lead and making sure she's in our place. Just so everyone is well aware, in the collective bargaining agreement, it's section 16.6, which is a retirement incentive. We sent that out to all of our staff because they need to notify us by October 1st if they're intending to retire. And to be, sorry, I get my brain going here. So to be eligible for the retirement incentive, a teacher has to be at least 50, has to have at least 20 years of service in the district. They have to announce their retirement and enroll in the District 403B Plan. And then they're eligible for $7,500 retirement stipend. So we just wanted to put that out the faculty. We just want to make sure folks are aware of the October 1st deadline. We are contracting with Criterion Engineers and they are a firm that will come in and do a capital needs facilities audit of all of our buildings. So we asked them for that, which was last year, they gave us a proposal, we included the West West School. So not only this school, but West West will be included in that facilities audit. And our, hard to have that is so that we can, that will help inform us as we come to buildings and grounds and look at ESSER-related funds and, but also just long-term, you know, planning for capital improvement. And then yesterday, our administrative team, but also teams of teachers, worked with Focus Schools, which is a consulting firm that we began working with back during the pandemic on our recovery plan. And as part of the work we're doing with them, we're now rolling into more of a building-based approach with instructional leadership teams. And so we had, I'm gonna say close to 30, maybe about just over 30 administrators and Liz hosted us up at the West West Building.
At the West West Building?
Yeah. Yeah, it's great.
We thought we'd kill the internet, but we didn't. And, but, you know, the teams got off to the ground and we, there was a lot of foundational work that the teams are working on. And then they'll continue to work throughout the year with Focus Schools, but also in individual teams. And it's all about strengthening the support for the development of school-based instructional leadership teams. So that is, that's about it. And then the other big thing is there's, we included a link in the, in the report about there's a ban on suspension and expulsion of students under the age of eight. And so we just want people to be aware of that and make board members aware of it and all the administrators are aware of it. It's pretty strict in the language that needs to be used. Then the only other thing is, you know, I'm sure Liz or the Westminster opened up, we're 158 students, are you up a little bit now?
157.
157, all right. So on the day I pulled this, it was 158. And then we are just starting to dip our toes into the budget season here. The finance committee will be meeting next week, so. Sorry?
Oh, good.
Yeah. So that is where we are.
Any questions for Andy, either Marjorie or team?
Yeah. How did the fact-finding tour go?
Oh, I thought it, the, yeah, no, we didn't get to all the buildings. So we haven't been to West, Westminster Center, we haven't been to West West, and we haven't been to Central. But it was quite eye-opening for myself, but I've been in all the buildings, but to hear other people's perspectives on how things went. I think we, you know, I think board members were enlightened by going and seeing different parts of the buildings and maybe parts that they don't always get to. And I think it's gonna open up quite a bit of discussion.
Okay, that's cool. Was David there?
David Clark?
Yeah.
No, he did not join us.
Okay.
One of the things I would echo about that is in what good overall condition each of the buildings was in.
Yeah.
I mean, reinforcing what Andy said about what maintenance has done to put them, whatever their age, into the best possible shape. And all the care that kind of comes through. We met with the principals in each of the buildings except Grafton. We weren't able to meet with the principal out there. But in each case, you know, it was, you just got a really positive feeling. I think one of the challenges that comes through most clearly for me is it's the high school, but many, many challenges that are there in that building environment. So we'll see, you know, it'll be interesting to process all of this with, with this larger question. Well, first of all, you know, what are the capital improvement needs in each of those buildings? What really is needed? And then secondly, if these discussions go forward about a possible place for an early childhood program, zero to four, plus our pre-K, plus new offices for the supervisory union, is there space? That's been one of the questions from citizens, is there space? And so that was part of the underlying purpose for this tour about.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's, everyone looks at space differently and so that's, that's the, you know, that's the challenge. And then getting groups together to find that common ground in what is, what's appropriate use of space.
And as Andy said, we've not been to the team of people, it was a pretty large group of us. Jim came along, Andy, as well as many board members. So we still haven't come to Westminster, West West, or the central schools, so look forward to that.
Yeah, yeah. Carolyn and Molly said they.
Not sure yet.
I don't think she did yet, so.
Okay, any other questions for Andy? I don't think so. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, how would you like to report on finance for us?
If you were, I ran off last night, and this is your E-Finance report, which is set by object listing. And the back page shows your budget ties in with the adopted budget. So it just gives you, you know, information, not a lot to see because, you know, school just started and you have your budget, your encumbrances to date, and the expenses on the far right. So in addition to that, I have what will become your, your new accounting system. And.
Thank you.
This shows you, it kind of ties into the entire budget. And I will say this because what I normally do during this time is look at, look at the budget entirely. And I've made some adjustments in your electric, some adjustments in your heating oil, some adjustments for the copiers and for communications. Okay, those are, those are, we're kind of looking at what the real costs are with the changes and we've updated those, those as, as we needed to. And we'll say, as we look at the budget in its entirety, for this year, you have probably 300 to 400 to the good. So, you know, I would say there's not too much worry with your budget expenditures. Looks like you're in a really solid position and considering what you had for last year, I think we should, we should be okay. And again, sometimes you don't know because you have had a change with a lot of staff. And sometimes you don't know how that's gonna rock and roll in the budget process. But so far, it, it doesn't look like it, it's changed your position much at all. So I do want to give you this. This shows where you are, and I have made all of the track and step changes with staff. We're 98% of putting staff in and knowing where we are. We've made changes on the health insurance, and this, this is a tough one, but I put 12% increase on the health insurance. You know, and again, I'm concerned because UVM rate was set at 14.8%. Vermont Health Connect was set about 12.5%. So I just don't know where that's gonna end up. But this gives you kind of a, a look at. What?
Thank you.
The budget, where you are to date. And again, I think, again, what, what staff changes may be made, we'll, we'll have to look and sift through and see where we go. All right, not to overload you with paper, but, but the last sheet that I want to give you is comparative with the salaries from this year to next year. And the only thing, the only thing that I didn't get into this was on the support staff. I didn't put in the new schedule. I, I stepped up, but I didn't realize it was a new schedule. But anyways, I've got that fixed, so. But the first page is 23 for this year, is where you're at. The second page is moving everybody up with the health insurance as well. And dental, I've not confirmed. I have confirmed the health insurance. I went through, reconciled it, I know where we're at. Dental, I haven't confirmed as yet. And the last page, the last page kind of gives you right now, your fiscal 23 comparative, which, you know, and again, I throw this out, if you had some emergency situations, it looks like you've got 300 at least to cover anything that, that came along. And as I say, that's, a lot of people wish they could be in that sort of position.
Are you? That's your room.
Did you, I don't know if you explained this already, but why is the, why is there a decrease in the proposed budget for health insurance for next year?
I don't know how the health insurance was budgeted last year. These are actual people this year. So last year, May, maybe there was a higher rate that was put in? Maybe there was more people? I'm really not sure why it was higher last year.
Okay.
So I, just because I was involved in the development of that budget, that was where we were in the transition time from having a business manager and just going to having consultants. And as we were doing that, we were trying to rectify some of the over-budgeting that had been done. And so I think as we were paring down, not really having the expertise and intimate knowledge, we didn't pare down all the way probably where we could have. But also with that fear of not wanting to go too far.
Yep.
And then we're in the, we're in the red this year.
Yeah. Well, and we're not in the red this year, we're in the black.
Right, which tells that we could have trimmed more, but I think, I'm just trying, as we were going through it, because we trimmed quite a bit out of healthcare as we went through it. I was very worried that we had trimmed too much. So is.
The only piece that will unravel a little bit, and that is the assessment piece.
Right.
You know, I, again, I've tried to put some increases in based on the assessments, but I do think in the end, you probably can cut 200 as you're going forward.
Yeah, perfect. Let me say a couple of things if I may. First, Margie's at a disadvantage because all of this is people being handed out. I'd really like you to be able to send to us electronic copies in advance of the board meetings.
Yes.
We'd much appreciate that.
Okay. Well, and I just finished it this afternoon, but I did send a copy to Ricky and I'll send it, I'll forward it tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. It just will help us.
Sure.
And I know you're still really, really working on all of the systems. We fully appreciate that. This is just a goal of ours to have the material electronically and in advance. And so Margie, you'll get it soon. And I think, so first of all, thank you. Thanks for all of this. And I think, I think we're not in a position to do much deep conversation about it until we've had a time to reflect on it a little bit more thoroughly ourselves. But unless there are any.
I have a question just about health insurance. Does the, do the different plans cost the district different amounts of money? Like does this, if you elect the silver plan as opposed to the gold, CVP or platinum, does that cost the district a different amount of money or just the employee?
Just the employee.
Okay.
Everything is chewed off from that gold plan, that gold CBHP plan.
And so some of, again, like when we were going through the budget last year and trying to make some corrections, were some assumptions made around workman's comp? That potentially we, we probably put in more than we needed for our workman's comp. So in that, that area, and to that, and even in that area of trying to do that, we decreased, you know, larger number area, but that's why I think so that overdid this kind of stuff.
Have the employees had information about the, like, other than just reading through what's involved in the plans, like?
Way better.
From people around what's involved in the platinum plan, the gold.
Yeah, so Joellin meets and offers, well, our human resources manager, she meets with folks, she runs like a coffee thing where she'll, you know, have hours where we come and get things. We are now moving also to an onboarding kind of program. So when folks come in, they need to, Joellin and go over. And so if we get, if we have one person who's coming on in a month, or if we have five people coming on a month, they all come in at the same time, we go over all the same information. And then if they have follow-up or individualized questions, they take an appointment with her and she goes through the plans with them and the explanations and the different approaches.
I will say that the health insurance is not an easy benefit to fully understand. And when I get those bills and when I have to call Blue Cross Blue Shield and that HRA piece as well, I'd say FSA piece, and I gotta tell you, I'm buried. I mean, I couldn't tell you, is it right? Don't know. So that's the biggest issue that I have with it. It's certainly not simple.
There are a couple of maybe concerns, maybe questions, but this format is different than we've been used to seeing. And so it's gonna take a little bit of time to figure that out. Secondly, you've put in a proposed 2024 budget and that, that is obviously draft, it's your thinking. We're accustomed to a process where the principal.
Sure.
Will work on developing his or her budget and bringing that forward, working with the school board. So this needs to be an interactive.
Absolutely. And it's not meant in any way to get ahead of it, but we know we're gonna have to follow the teacher salary schedule and, and step. I mean, those are, those are some of the basic stuff. It just, the format, and again, where it becomes very hard, is the agency of education has a set 20-digit code. And that's something that we certainly want to try to adhere to. And in the past, wasn't always done. And it does make it difficult as you're going forward because, and I mentioned this to Liz, you know, before you had some supply accounts. You had food as, as one broken apart. And I usually don't do that. I usually have a supply account and I'm trying to reduce the number of accounts as much as possible and still get the meaningful data to analyze.
I think the other thing is, Jim, and we just talked about this and shared, so Jim's making appointments with each principal.
Okay.
And so he'll be coming around. So let's just take the top line, which is teacher salaries, which is, got a projection for FY '24. If Liz says, yeah, I'm gonna need to add five more teachers, just making a number up, but five more staff, then that number will get adjusted.
Yes.
To reflect that. So this is based on what she currently has and what, based on the CBA, the natural movement of a teacher will cost. So that's just giving you that kind of foreshadowing of where it might be moving forward. So, you know, we don't want to give the, the impression that this is anywhere finalized in any way.
Well, it's great to be on top of it though, and really giving us something to look at. I just want, for the record, people to understand that this is, this is draft, it's very preliminary.
And here's just something too, if you were $400,000 over, you, now's the time to know that. Because you want to make adjustments as you needed to. So that's all it's meant to do is just to show you where we, where we look like, where we're going.
Does Act 173 go until place next year?
It's in place.
It's in place now, not the budgetary piece of it.
Yes.
It is this year. I don't know if it's waiting until next year.
Block range is, in, in, we actually, knock on wood, we didn't come out too bad where our early projections five years ago were at best a half a million dollars short to $2 million short. And I think we only came out a few thousand, tens of thousands of dollars short as opposed to what, because of some of the weighting studies that got changed and, you know, some of that stuff. So, so there was, there was some, some changes that happened in those years. So we thankfully benefited from that. But it's something we have to really watch because it is not going to sound like we're all, you know, keep.
Right.
It's like title, it's gonna keep going down.
Decreases.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Thanks again, very much, thank you. And with that, I don't know that you need, it's up to you.
Very good. Thank you. Are you going to say?
Thank you very much. Well, thank you.
That was good, you're welcome. Usually he has to sit for a little while.
That's right.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, Liz, principals report.
Yes, we welcomed 170, 157 students, 28 kindergarteners, we have 21 first graders, 23 second graders, 15 third graders, 21 fourth graders. We have 21 first graders, 23 second graders, 15 third graders, 21 fourth graders, 22 fifth graders and 27 sixth graders. Our open house was Monday, the 29th, and we had a, it was an opportunity for families to meet the staff, see the classrooms, reconnect with other families. We were able to have refreshments out on the playground and, which was a really great setting for parents to be able to talk with other parents, casually talk with staff and kids could play. We had 70% of our students attend that evening. Like Andy was saying, we are embracing responsive classroom. And one key component of responsive classroom is the first six weeks of school. And this is a tough opportunity where we hold back on academics and are really teaching procedures and routines and expectations. And we're learning how to use materials through guided discovery and practice. And it's really proactive so that when we actually do use the math manipulators or the books or the markers or crayons, students know exactly what is expected of them. So that is what is happening in our classrooms right now. Our dismissal, if you got the Westminster Weekly, we're returning back to the three o'clock dismissal to accommodate both the bus schedule and the teacher contractual day. So we were three-ten when we realized that that wasn't really working with the bus arrival and teacher contractual day. Our sixth graders are at Camp Key Weeden this week, which is really, they had a wonderful week for it. Well, the heads and rain, but that's exciting as well. This is an environmental educational opportunity providing hands-on experiential learning. The campus is in Salisbury, Vermont, right on Lake Dunmore. And we haven't been able to do this in two years. So students left on Monday morning and they'll arrive back tomorrow afternoon. Yes. Like Andy said, our after-school program is up and running. We welcomed 33 students this week who are currently enrolled. We're offering clubs including yoga, biking and cooking. Our biking club started today and it runs from 3:15 to four, well, 5 o'clock. Our bus arrives at 4:45. And it's open to all students in grade one through six. Kindergartners are welcome in January. TEAM, our community, parent teacher organization, will have our first meeting next Thursday. This is September 22nd at 5 o'clock out on the playground. We're hoping to keep them outside until it gets too dark and so kids can play and parents can meet and goal set for the year. I wanted to get into our community engagement opportunities. I know that's the next item on the agenda, but if there's any questions on what I've said so far, I can take questions now and then move into the next item.
Any questions? I have a question both from Margie and TEAM. Are you planning to participate in the TEAM meeting?
I was conjoined into being on TEAM last year. I was the treasurer. I'm thinking about doing it. It is very fun and it's a great group. It's just a lot of extra meetings on top of this.
What is it?
It's the parent teacher organization. So it's our P T O, we call it TEAM. We're not an official P T O.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, we meet every month. So if you're not ready to join in September, we'll be meeting in October.
Okay. Hey, when does the three o'clock dismissal start?
That will start tomorrow. Well, we tried this week. What happened was, before I put it out to families, which I did today, I wanted to test it out this week and see if it was actually going to work because I didn't want to change it and then have to change it again and get even more confusing that it already is. So we have been dismissing at three now, which isn't a problem because people are here at 2:30 and they're waiting. And then tomorrow it's officially three o'clock.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I don't.
No, I mean, my own kids are having an amazing experience.
Yeah, it's been a really positive environment this year. We have wonderful new staff that has joined us. And somebody said today, the kindergartners are such a great group, that they said, it's like the kindergartners have been here for years. They just kind of came right in. It's really been wonderful, very positive. But if you want me to just go into the next item on the agenda, which is parents.
I was going to, you know, say also that I thought the open house was wonderful. I personally had wished for maybe a sign in the front of the building to say doors will open at a certain time because I and a few others were not quite sure, you know, when and where the doors were going to open. When they did open, there were people welcoming everybody and that was great. That was just fun. I also thought it worked well to have the lemonade and ice cream without having all the other stuff. People were happy with that. And it was great to see children playing on the playground. It was great to see so many parents and grandparents and others milling around and talking and...
Yeah, it was interesting because I felt really committed to the barbecue this year because we hadn't had it in so many years. And when I looked financially at what that would cost the school, I really had to relook at what was the purpose of it and can we replicate that purpose in a way that's financially responsible? And ice cream and lemonade is definitely financially responsible. And we were able to meet our goal of families being together and our school community being together. And it was also a beautiful night with sunning. Yeah.
I thought it was really good.
Yeah, it was really good.
Everyone seemed very happy. It was very celebratory.
Yeah, exactly.
We could also do like B Y O dinner or something.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
Like a picnic.
Right. If you want to bring your own dinner, we got the ice cream and lemonade. Bring dinner. I like that.
So that's your principals of report. And then the question is to move into more about the...
Community engagement.
Yeah.
If I had to say, one of the things that maybe we should start thinking now about the next year is are there ways that we can tap some of our title funds? We just need to make it around educational engagement as well. So, but I think that we do that and we can do that in all our schools. But that would provide the additional funds and another way to tap. I'm just wondering if we can figure that out because it's always...
And to look back historically, if we were going to have the, and I think that's what they did. I think they funded the picnic through engagement funds and I, it titled them, but I think they weren't... Right now, we can only use, I think it's $3 per student on food and it has to be like refreshments. I'm not sure how stretched that was years ago.
It's gotten tighter, but I wonder if we can just go back and look at that, which is identical to what you did.
I also think it was nice for like, it was an hour, right? Which is nice for like, teachers are in their classrooms so much before the school year starts and they're working such long days. It's nice that we're only kind of requiring an hour of their, other than a long dinner, which would be nice, but it's also like, they have been working really hard to get everything going. It was nice, like, it's a nice meet you. Everyone gets to talk and mill and then it's like...
And I had to take into consideration, it was, what was it, 5:30 to 6:30? Which for our youngest students could potentially be like 11 o'clock at night to them, you know? So it's like, we're just not expecting kids to sit and eat, which are they really going to do when they're so pumped about that, just meeting their teacher? So, yeah, we can definitely, I'd love the feedback. So we'll invite it for next year.
Was it, it was 5:30 to six in the classrooms, wasn't it? And then six to 6:30 or something?
Yeah, it became more fluid. Yeah, I mean, of course, in my head, I was like, this is what's going to happen. And that didn't exactly happen, but it was fine. But we did shut the doors at 6:30 so teachers could, because we had another whole day of responsive classroom training the next morning. So I wanted to look for it to... Yeah.
Well, thank you. Best of the whole team. Wonderful evening.
Great. Glad you enjoyed it.
So any other ideas for parent and community involvement?
Well, I made, I emailed it to Nicole to send it out to the board. I made a little flyer that I thought would be a little bit more helpful for community.
I'm trying to share it.
Okay, for the community to be, to know where and how to volunteer.
Great. I don't think I've seen this.
Oh, okay. Here, I just, I'll share it. I'm planning to share it out with our school community.
I have one.
Okay.
I'll take one.
Okay, I'll give it to you. I'm planning to share it out with our school community next week, but I wanted to bring it to the board in case the board wanted to share it with our larger community than maybe read my newsletter.
I'll be doing this winter sports thing.
Perfect. So these are just ways, you know, our classrooms are busy places. We want community involved, obviously, but we want it in a way that's going in hands, learning that's currently there. And these are just five ways in which community can come on in. We have reading buddies. So if you are somebody who can be at the school every week at a certain time, I can match you with a teacher who has their reader's workshop at that time. And you can come in and read with individual groups of students that just be in the classroom with the teacher. Yeah.
Margie, can you see the flyer now?
I have it. Yeah, I have it on my phone. I've been looking at it. Yeah, no problem.
Is it on the screen though?
No, it is not.
On the screen. There you go. That's what I want to make sure. All right. Sorry.
Yeah. Another idea would be lunch mentors. That's where we work with our school counselor to match a community member with one of our students who could use some more positive adult interaction. And they would just have lunch once a week, once every other week. That's a little bit more flexible of a schedule, but we would want something consistent because students will be depending on it. Winter sports, we're hoping to get back up to a chemo. So we're always looking for community members who are interested in going to the mountain. Yeah, perfect. Studio Y is another great opportunity. They have maker space for students. So we're always looking for an extra set of hands. We can always use people to help manage that. And then, of course, our after-school program, if you have a talent or an interest that you'd love to share with students, this is a great place to run a club. If you are into knitting, crocheting, cooking, outdoor adventure, really anything kids can get pretty pumped about, we'd love to have you lead a club.
This is outstanding. Thank you. It came in, it looks like about 5:02 and I wasn't able to look at it before, but I'm thrilled with this. This is history. You know, it was maybe 2015, 2016, 2017, we started this opportunity for people in the community to sign up to...
I found those.
Right. It was all those files. And there wasn't always a good process. You had created this in major opportunity areas that work for you and work for the teachers and work for the parents. I'm totally thrilled with this. So thank you. And we'll just see how it goes. But I mean, the categories of reading, lunch, sports, Studio Y, and then after-school. People want to do something more elaborate. If they've got, you know, if they're great at cooking and they want to share that. Or I've had, you know, some people offered to knit with kids and that could be an after-school activity or any number of other things.
And the after-school program, clubs run like a certain amount of meets.
They're like six-week chunks.
Or even, we can make it be whatever length they're committing to. If they say, I like to cookie, decorate cookies, I can commit to the next three Tuesdays. And they can do that and we can set that up for them. So...
This is great. So with this getting started, you're having everybody contact you.
Yeah.
So let us know. That could be kind of overwhelming, you know, I mean, you're...
Oh, I hope it becomes overwhelming. Like, I hope that we have such a flooded community that I'm having to call you Cheryl and say, I can't manage it. That would be like a happy problem, you know? But yes.
That's right. That's right. And so how are you going to communicate the opportunity?
So that's where I'm reaching out to the board. So this will go in our newsletter. I'll put it, I'll post it on our Facebook page separately. Potentially could go into the newspaper.
We'll get it up on our website.
Okay.
But if you want to do that.
Right. Yeah, then let's make sure that's...
The next issue of the Gazette.
Yeah, yeah.
I can have Allison put in the...
Oh, perfect. That'd be great.
I'll hang it up at my office and I'll, I'll print one off and have it hung up at the co-op in Putney.
Oh, awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
That's great, Margie. So we can, we'll spread the word and see what happens.
We can do a helicopter drop.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Environmentally friendly.
They can have seeds in the paper.
Maybe I'm just saying environmentally friendly, right? So biodegradable paper.
Well, related to this, and this, I was possibly going to add it as a new business, although no action is needed. Jessie Haas of Westminster is president of the Westminster Historical Society. And she yesterday offered that members of the board, members of the community and others, she'd love to host to visit the museum, which is in Town Hall, and the Bradley Law Office, which is a little within walking distance of the school.
Oh, okay.
So that you could explore more about the educational opportunities available to learn more about Westminster history, you know, kind of a living history approach to it as well. So we'll ask Jessie to contact you to figure that out and then we'll create an opportunity for board members and others to learn more.
Yeah, definitely. And there's definitely grades that would be like fourth grade, yeah.
Karen Blanchard also wanted to get back into reading. I know she's not here today, but remember she said she wanted to be a reading buddy?
Yes, absolutely.
You need loved the older kids' reading buddy today. That was...
Oh, yeah.
She was so stoked about that. I know that's an offshoot, but...
No, I'm good. I'm glad. And they, that's, I'll mention that, that we have book buddies within our building. So our, I think our...
Fourth in kindergarten.
Sometime, it just, older grades are paired with younger grades. And I believe it is fourth in kindergarten are connected. And they meet a couple times a month and read together or do other things, you know, craft or they'll go outside or when we marched in the Halloween parade, we were marching with our book buddies.
No, Marlo and April came together. That's right.
So it is really a sweet, and then we just know, and then staff and students know more of the kids in the building. It's just really an easy, easy way to do that.
Wonderful. So I think that's all for parent and community involvement. Yes, yes. Very exciting. Thank you. And then I only added possible capital improvements, just to have us keep thinking about it. I know that's on the list. We're there to E S R. I know you've got the assessment about to happen, so we're going to audit the whole thing, right?
The pumps are, should be in the process of getting in the ground at some point, right?
Yeah, we're in the process. It's a ordering issue. So that will happen in October.
And then I think the, the other piece is we're going to be going up the bit with the roof here soon, but it should be...
Roof here or West, West or...
Oh, yeah.
You know, when we were at West West yesterday, I was looking at the roof and I was like, you know, I should say something to Liz about the roof out here. Then I remembered that we incorporated that.
Oh, really? The roof is looking at it? I'm surprised. Yeah.
So, but, yeah, so we, and then what, Jim De Bell and I will be coming around and meeting with Liz and Jeff to sit down and look at all, not just E S R related, but what are all the capital improvement needs? And then start to develop a five-year plan. Because where I think we have opportunities, where like, you may end up with a fund balance. We would love to be able to come back to you and say, we recommend that, you know, in three years, we know that X is going to happen. So why don't we take some of our fund balance and start putting it aside possibly? So that that's not a huge need of influence of cash kind of thing. So, so we want to be able to be prepared for those things, but also have it kind of always on the forethought, you know, so that, because people change, right? And then we're relying on memory as opposed to a plan. So we really want to have that plan in place.
And Westminster does have a significant surplus from 21 budget and 22 budget. And that's why I continue to raise this because for the first time, we'll be going to the voters in March, asking them to approve uses of these prior surpluses that have come back to Westminster. And this will be the first time the voters have a chance to vote on the uses of that money. And that's why it's quite prudent for us to really have a good handle on what's needed.
And the firm that we're working with, when I contacted them and did the contract, they said that it'd be, you know, about a week or two turnaround before they can start really doing work. So we're talking, you know, we'll probably get them in here around October to start really looking at all of our facilities. You know, it's a suitcase exam. So I think we'll get a lot out of it. It'll help us inform. It'll help inform your act fair and what's the best uses of funds. You know, we've got some security upgrades we need to do. We're hoping to, we're going to bring that to the S U next week. We're hoping to maybe utilize some S U funds because like, some of our systems need to be S U wide as opposed to Westminster specific and a lot of its platforms, you know? So... So, so we want to, we're going to be coming with that. But then there's going to be, that might be like the minimum, like, we might come in, like, the minimum recommendation is, I'm making something up here, but let's say it's three cameras around the building, and, but there's a desire to have additional cameras, that might be, and I, something that specifically the school decides to put aside, and then we're using that platform, but it'll still be on your, bless you, or windows or something that makes sense.
Can, can you repeat what, what you just said, Cheryl, about the, the voters voting on what to do with those funds?
When, yes, I'm happy to repeat it, and, and the context is this, that with the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District, when Westminster was a part of that up until this current, effective July one, up until this current budget year, the last two years, when we were part of that Union Elementary District, there was a budget surplus specific to Westminster's share of that overall Union Elementary budget. Those numbers have been finalized, and it's well more than a million dollars. It's actually a million and then another million. And because of the transition for the Westminster School District to become fully operational again effective this last July one, those monies were carried forward and brought to the Westminister Town School District, and they simply have come into our budget effective July one. But because they're surpluses from budgets the voters previously voted on, and now that we're a fully reconstituted school district again, it will be up to the voters to take action on where that money will be used. Therefore, we, the board, need to make recommendations to the voters about how those monies might be used. Sometimes, for example, in the past, there have been some surpluses. We put money aside for tuitions for the seventh and eighth graders when we, we're just not sure if we might be short or not, because one year we underestimated how many tuitions we would need. We've put, people can put in money for capital improvements, and that's one of the reasons I'm suggesting that now. Let's be really proactive about what's needed here. And then, and then monies could go back to the taxpayers. That's absolutely another part of that process. Sure, go ahead, Margie.
So are you saying that every time there is a, a use, it's going to need to be voted on? Or is there, we propose a budget for the year that we're, or we propose things for the year that we're going to do, and then the people vote on that once a year? Or how, how does that work?
There are two things you're asking there. Yes, every year at town meeting, the voters in Westminster vote to approve the budget that we recommend to them for Westminster that includes our supervisory union assessments. That's one thing. And separate from that, if we have a surplus, we ask the voters to make, to vote on how to use that.
During town meeting?
Correct.
We should make a, like, uh, we should, we should use the budget, we should create a like nonprofit and invest that surplus this year and ask the voters just one time if they would approve using the surplus for this, to be invested. And then, from that pool, you, we can use the monies anytime, anywhere, forever, you know?
There, there's some statute around how we can utilize fund balances.
Law.
Yeah, it's very strict on how school boards can recommend the use of, of fund balances, and then what, what the voters can vote on to use those funds for. So sometimes, essentially, school districts are not allowed to carry over fund balances. They can't have unrestricted fund balances, so they actually have to identify them to, to go to something.
Well, that's what I mean. We, they should go to a, it should go to a, like a, oh, what do they call it? When a school has an endowment. It should go to an endowment.
I don't, I, I, I would have to check this, but I don't believe that public schools can have endowments.
Well, I know that the Guilford School does, and they created a nonprofit that's associated with the school, and then the nonprofit runs their endowment.
I'll have to look into that, yeah. I'm, I'm not familiar with that, so I apologize. So I'll have to look into that.
Supposed to be at Guilford tomorrow.
That way, that way you can utilize the money that's there. The taxpayer has already paid, you know? The taxpayer's already paid their surpluses. We should, we should, like, we should, like, capture those surpluses so that we can then use them, capture them for now, so that every time, you don't need to be asking every time at town meeting and having like, you know, discourse on what exactly they're going to be used on. You just have that fund, and then the district can decide what to, to use it on, and it doesn't have to be voted on once a year. It's just captured monies.
Well, so that's a very helpful, thoughtful discussion. We can't take any action on that now. It's not a warned item on the budget, but we, I mean, on the, on the agenda, but very helpful and thoughtful. So let's follow up?
Yeah.
Thanks. I think we have, to my knowledge, then no new business for discussion or action, and that leads us to director's comments, if we're ready for that. Any director's comments? It's been a great start to the year, I think, so thank you for all your hard work. Yeah. Margie?
Nothing to add. Good start to the year. The kids are loving it. Everything seems to be going well. Sorry, I went off on that tirade.
I like that idea.
Yeah, much to think about, really, genuinely. So we'll have to do a little more research with that. And I'd echo, thank you. I would again ask Liz, just to convey our thanks to all of the staff here, everyone involved, our new school nurse, our paraprofessionals, our new team members, and certainly all the, the teachers and others. It was interesting at Get an Open House, how many SU employees are here in the building in addition to the teachers that we know pretty well, and the paraprofessionals who've been here for a long time. But it's a great community of people, so our thanks to everyone in the kitchen and the management crew.
Yeah.
Everybody else. The date and time of our next meeting, and we're meeting monthly now until budget season, and then, then we will tend to have, the first Thursday of the month will tend to be a budget meeting, and then the third Thursday will be our regular board meeting, and we'll see how efficiently we can move through and thoughtfully we can move through all of that. But for now, our next board meeting is October twentieth. So, thank you. Intervene a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All right. We're adjourned.